Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Port Clinton City Council of June 10th, 2014. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, the Lord's Prayer, and among the silence for men and women serving overseas.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And we live not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you. The courts please call the roll. Mike Snyder?
Present.
Ron Ackerman?
Present.
Lisa Sardi?
Present.
Gabe Belo?
Present.
Jerry Trolle?
Present.
Nicole Fridas?
Present.
Margaret Phillips?
Present.
Thank you. You have before you the minutes of the May 27th regular meeting, but I have a motion to accept the minutes as stated.
How can I make a motion?
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Yes, okay. Thank you, Ms. Sardi. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The Chair notes that certification has been received regarding compliance with the rules and notification of this meeting. Tonight we have a short guest presentation by Amy Cantu from the Ottawa County Department of Disabilities. Amy, you're on.
All right. I am just coming to let everyone know that again this year, we have, Ottawa County has been asked to carry the Olympic torch for Special Olympics. And on Sunday, June the 22nd, at 5:00, we are going to begin the run at the Jefferson Street Pier. It is going to go down Jefferson Street to Fourth Street to Madison, all the way downtown, and end at the Knights of Columbus Hall on Perry Street.
Okay?
Okay. So, we're just asking the community to come out and support the athletes on their way to the Summer Games, which will be the last weekend in July, or in June. So, we're like the first leg, and it comes through here. We're actually going to run on Put-in-Bay, too, and then come here to run, and then from here, it will go to Lucas County and continue on its way to Columbus. And then we'll go to Columbus the following Friday, and when we get to Columbus on Friday, then it will come into the stadium and they'll light the torch for the Summer Games. So, I'd like to see as many people out lining the streets as we can get out there, so I just wanted to come here and let everybody know, let all your friends know. I want to take this opportunity to thank Chief Hickman and Mayor Leon. They have been phenomenal in helping me get this together. We've also had the Sheriff's Department, the Coast Guard, the 200th Red Horse is coming out to run with us. If anybody, if anybody would like to run with us or volunteer to help us put it on, you can, you can call me out at the county board and just ask to talk to me, and they'll get you to my extension. And there's, there's plenty of things for everybody to do if you'd like to come out and help us.
That's it?
All right. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Thank you. Have they competed at the regional level to make it to state yet? I know last year there were two votes for Port Clinton.
Yes. There's, actually, we're taking three athletes, and we, we're taking actually all bowling athletes this year, and they competed in a regional meet in April in Napoleon to qualify. So, bowling, bowling is huge. There, there are probably, there will be 30,000 athletes at the Summer Games, and probably 7,000 of them bowl. So, it's huge. It gets its own whole day. So, it'll be fun. All right. Thanks.
If you didn't, last year we got to, we also posted the carrying of the torch.
Yes.
And if you didn't go out and see it, you really missed an op, a wonderful opportunity. It's very moving to see all these individuals run, and they are just so excited. And it's just, to have the community come out and clap as they walk by, it's phenomenal. So, if you have the opportunity, you know, you can stand on the corner, within 10 minutes they pass you by, so it's not like you're wasting a whole evening. And, and it, like I said, it's, it's a very moving experience. It's very nice to see, and you've given a person a true thrill. So, anything else?
No.
Chief or Mayor? Got anything to say?
Is there something I want to talk about, Chief?
No, nothing.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just meant about this particular event.
Oh, yes. The event was great. Area law enforcement assisted, State Patrol, U.S. Border Patrol. This year, I think we're going to have actually officers running with it. It was, as Madam President said, it truly was a moving experience, and they just had a blast. So did we, actually.
If I could add, we also are privileged to have the helps join in to supply lunch for all the participants and the helpers, I would expect at least 100 people or so. And the FOPA, the organization showing support for our law enforcement community, is also taking on to lend their hands. We're very grateful for everybody reaching out. So, if you could, like President O'Loch said, come out, cheer 'em on. It's worth it just to put a smile on their face when they got that support. It'd be appreciated.
And I will tell you across the state are where the torch travels. The law enforcement, our local, the sheriff, the border patrol, the Red Horse, it's one of the largest groups, this small little town in Port Clinton, Ohio, it's one of the largest groups of law enforcement that come out to support this in the whole state. So, I mean, it's...
Well, we went the first year, after 20 years of not participating in Special Olympics, we got back into Special Olympics. And the first year, it was me and another girl, and two kids went over to Put-in-Bay and ran in the race at Put-in-Bay, and that was it. And as we were riding around in a golf cart in this parade, me and my coworker, and it was pouring down rain, we were at the boardwalk and could not see the Jet Express. And we said to one another, "Next year, we either go big or go home." That's how cool the event was. And so, we did it last year with the collaboration of everybody else, because they were thinking about cutting Ottawa County out of the run. And so, we did it last year, and after the run last year, the guy from the law enforcement torch run said to me, "We're not going anywhere." So, we, the city of Port Clinton has really stepped up and, and saved Ottawa County actually being a stop on the torch run, so...
Did you also run at Put-in-Bay the same day?
Yes. Earlier in the day. The run, the run at Put-in-Bay starts at 2:00, and that route goes from the little stone quarry that's right there by the mill, where the Miller boat docks. It goes from there all the way into town and around, around the park and ends at the boardwalk. So, that's a hefty run, but it's a ways.
Hey, anybody else have any questions for Amy? Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Thanks. Hope to see you guys on the 22nd.
Thank you, Amy.
Yep.
Okay, and we'll now go to the Mayor's report.
Madam President, just to let council know, Mr. Norga delivered the submerged land lease application. He has a made a theory of Mr. Colson, the safety service director, to sign off on that. It's approximately about a 90-day process before he actually did that, so just wanted to make sure of what he had. I also had the final report from SMNE talking specifically to the grounds of where the lighthouse would potentially be located, so they are well informed of what they need to do in order to create foundations to support that, that structure and keep it safe. Last council meeting, I was, I was absent. I had an opportunity to, I don't know, West Side Moser season was, during the banquet. But I also had Safety Service Director Tracy Colson written a letter of apology talking about the cemeteries, and I just want to kind of give an update of what took place. Phone call I had received Monday morning to explain the condition of the cemeteries, and when I looked, I couldn't agree more about that. Obviously prompted the letter. But I can tell you Tuesday morning, everyone from the search garage, including all the summer help, was there to trim, to pick up grass, to cut, to blow off the stones to take care of it. And the job was extremely large because of the black, excuse me, fork. It basically took all week. But I'm very appreciative that the work is complete. We are now on a two-times-a-week cycle of cutting that lawn and maintaining it. I'm very grateful also to the tree commission, who meant to do some tree trimming. They went out there to lift all the trees and clean things up to make, to beautify that area. So, I'm very grateful for that. I just want to let you know what is taking place, that those words were met when I said up, and we will follow through, and we will continue to follow through. Just a small reminder, I know we sent out an email, it was something in the newspaper. Tomorrow we will receive a presentation from ODAT to the city concerning the downtown project. This will take place at the restaurant 1812 at 11:00 PM. So, if you can make it, it's obviously open to the public as well. Just one other note, speaking with the Safety Service Director today, obviously our little friends in Mayflies are back in town. So, we will be working, we need it, the lights turned off, so that we can hopefully eliminate some of the mess and some of the smoke. No further, Madam President.
Thank you. Auditor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to remind everyone that I had the opportunity to complete the May 2014 one-day reports. Those were sent out, I believe, on June 3rd, so if you have not received a copy, please feel free to let me know. And as always, if you have any questions, we'll read your content.
Thank you. Treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I've been getting some questions about bid taxes, and so I thought I'd give a comparison with court. Bid taxes do come in the month after they're collected, so it'll talk to the May taxes that come in during the month of June. For June, up to today, we've received $26,306.61. That's the whole year to now. And all of June last year was $29,835. So, that's only 3,000 difference, but there are still 23 people to pay yet on this year's, so that should make a pretty good number. For an actual comparison, the May numbers would be the April payments. May of 2013 was $15,303, and so far this year, which is complete, $22,112. So, for May, we're almost $7,000 ahead. So, I thought you'd be pleased to hear that.
Thank you. Thank you. Law Director's report.
Nothing to talk about.
Police Chiefs' report.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Fire Chiefs' report.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Under correspondence, I have an invitation to the Ottawa County Improvement Corporation's Board of Trustees meeting, which is Wednesday, June 18th. It will be at Chenado Gardens. You have to RSVP by June 11th, and the clerk will have that information. I have a note from Janet and Richard Callahan, members of council. We recently received a water bill for $196. We are very upset about this because we can find no excuses for this excessive amount of water. I called the water department and was told that this was what was red for our home. Our home is a two-bedroom manufactured home at the fountain, manufactured home park here. There are only two people here, my husband, Richard A. Callahan, Lieutenant Colonel, retired USAF, ANG, and myself. We did have a problem with one of our toilets running, but that has been fixed. The water rates are outrageous in this city. We are trying to sell our house, our home, and one problem we are having is that when prospective buyers hear about the water rates, they just walk away. Why are the rates so high? Also, we want our meter read manually from now on. We are discussing this use, I'm sorry, writing's a little hard. We are discussing the use of an attorney for this bill because we do not have the money for it. Thank you, Janet and Richard Callahan. I have a note, PC Council, thank you so much for the beautiful plan to remember Jeff. It's so comforting, comforting to have you support a family and friends at such a sad time. Your kindness is very much appreciated by all of us, the family of Jeff and both. I would take a motion to accept the correspondence as stated along with the email auditor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Ms. Sardi. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will now go to the reading of ordinances and resolutions. There are no third readings of ordinance and resolutions, and under the second readings of ordinance and resolutions is an ordinance that asks to give permission to the Safety Service Director to enter into an agreement for the submerged land lease. Mr. Wilber had done some research, and there was a resolution that we did in December, and that was sufficient for ODNR, so we don't need to pass this ordinance. So, tonight what we need to do is we need to waive the three required readings, and then we need to make a motion to adopt the ordinance, and then you need to vote no, because we just, we don't need it. So, we don't want it, we don't want to pass. The situation's already taken care of, the submerged land lease is already been applied for, so, so that's what we need to do on that one. So, if the clerk please would agree by title and summary only, ordinance 13-14.
Ornance 13-14, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to apply for all necessary coastal permits and to apply for and entering to a submerged land lease with the State of Ohio Department of Natural Resources for a portion of the state's submerged lake land area located adjacent to upland property owned by the City of Port Clinton and declaring an emergency. Does council wish to take any action on ordinance 13-14? Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion and waive the three required readings on ordinance.
I have a motion to waive the required, three required readings on ordinance 13-14 by the second. Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Any discussion on the waiving of the readings? Would the clerk please call the roll? Call this, yeah? Yeah. First one, yeah. Second one, no. All right, Snyder?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Gabe Belo?
Yes.
Nicole Fridas?
Yes.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any further action on ordinance 13-14? Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion and adopt the ordinance.
I have a motion to adopt ordinance 13-14 tonight, the second, Ms. Phillips. Yes, thank you. Does council have any discussion? Would the court please call the roll? Gabe Belo?
No.
Ron Ackerman?
No.
Nicole Fridas?
No.
Margaret Phillips?
No.
Mike Snyder?
No.
Lisa Sardi?
No.
Jerry Trolle?
No.
Thank you all very much. I want to make it perfectly clear to the audience and, and the newspapers, so that this doesn't get confused. This does not mean we did not support the submission of the application. The application has been submitted. We have, have received word back from ODNR that they have gotten the application and that the next steps are, are in place. This was just a redundant ordinance, so to speak.
Okay. We will now go to new readings of ordinance and resolutions. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, Resolution 14-03?
14-03, a resolution in support of a grant application to the Ottawa-Sinduski-Seneca Joint Solid Waste Management District and authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to submit such application. Does council wish to take any action this evening on, on Resolution 14-03?
Mr. Ackerman?
Yes, Madam President, I would like to make a motion and waive the three required readings for, or, excuse me, Resolution 14-03.
I have a motion to waive the three required readings on Resolution 14-03.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Trolle. Any discussion? Mr. Ackerman?
Thank you, Madam President. The Parks Recreation Cemetery Committee met today, and Resolution 14-03 was one of the topics on our, added to our agenda, and we recommend by a unanimous vote that full council waive the required readings and then pass Resolution 14-03 tonight. This resolution permits the city to pursue a grant with the OSS Joint Solid Waste Management for the purpose, excuse me, for the purchase of planners and trash receptacles at the city's senior citizen center. These items will be used to continue the renovation at the senior center.
Madam President. Thank you. Any other discussion? Would the court please call the roll? Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Nicole Fridas?
Yes.
Gabe Belo?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Does council wish to take any further action on Resolution 14-03? Mr. Ackerman?
Yes, Madam President, I make a, thank you, a motion that we adopt Resolution 14-03.
I have a motion to adopt Resolution 14-3. 03, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Trolle. Any discussion? Mr. Ackerman?
Yes, Madam President, I neglected to mention that this is a time-sensitive issue as the grant application must be prepared by the Safety, Director of Safety and Service, submitted on or by June 31st, 24th. So, it says, so it must be June 30th.
I guess.
No, I'm just reading. My apologies.
Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Gabe Belo?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Nicole Fridas?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 14-03 is passed. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance 14-14?
Ornance 14-14, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the relining of the sanitary sewer for Fulton Street from Fourth Street to Seventh Street and Maple Street from Perry Street to Second Street and declaring an emergency.
Does council wish to take any action this evening on ordinance 14-14? Seeing none, we will move that to its second reading, to the June 24th meeting. We will now go to business from the floor. Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, Madam President. Next week we'll have the whole group in here from the Fourth of July festivities to make a formal presentation and tell everyone about all the activities going on, but I would like to, to mention a few of the activities that need advanced registration and signup. First of all, there will be a meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM. If anyone is interested in, in hopping on the, the committee, it'll be at 6:00 PM at the Chris's Big Boy Restaurant here in town. One of the events scheduled is the fire crack and QD contest. I think it's the third or fourth year in a row that, that this has taken place. The applications for that are available at Perfect Color Hair and Tan, Mary's Blossom Shop, and on the Facebook page, so far, Fourth of July Facebook page, you can like a Port Clinton Area Fourth, 4TH, Fourth of Ju, Port Clinton Area Fourth of July Celebration, and you can pull that off. Greg Fox, a former high school music instructor, is again coordinating the Voices of Freedom, and I believe some of this audience are participating in that. They have rehearsals every Wednesday evening at Trinity Methodist Church. If you're interested in joining that group, contact Greg Fox at 419-341-2579, again, And then a, and then a new addition this year is a classic car, truck, and cycle show that will take place on the Fourth of July. Those applications, it's free, free entry for that. Those applications are available at the Country Gentlemen on Second Street by contacting Debbie Tester at 419-341-0378, again, 341-0378, or again, also, excuse me, also available on the Facebook page. I wasn't here two weeks ago, so I neglected to mention, I couldn't mention, that the last fall, the Police Department and Fire Department played a friendly softball game with the winner, being the Police Department taking on the high school girls softball team. That match, the game took place about three weeks ago, and the girls defeated the Police Department. They did fast pitch to the Police Department, and the Police Department did the slow pitch to the girls softball team, but everyone, I think, had a great time, and it sounds like we'll be doing that again. I, I've also learned that the Police Department will be playing the Sheriff's Department on July 12th, Saturday, July 12th, at 11:00 PM, 11:00 AM, down at, at Water Ridge Park. So, if you'd like to come out and watch a bunch of folks play softball, and you can also ask Chief Hickman why he's wearing a foot brace, he'll be happy to tell you why. The Finance Committee will meet next Tuesday, 6:30, at the meeting room next door. Everyone's welcome to, to come to that. And finally, Madam President, I would like to wish my mother a happy birthday on June 19th.
Mr. Ackerman?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to follow Mike Snyder in wishing my mom a happy birthday on June 16th. My mom's older than your mom. My mom's 24, so...
Make a little louder, everybody.
My mom's 25 still. That'll be all, Madam President.
Mrs. Sardi? Nothing at this time. Mr. Belo?
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Trolle?
I just thought, Emergency Services will have a meeting next Tuesday, 5:00.
That's it?
That's all. I'm sorry.
Mrs. Fridas?
Well, I'm going to have to join Mike and Ron in wishing my mom a happy birthday on June 16th as well. And she thought she was going to be a certain age, and my son and I figured it out, she's actually going to be a year younger, so I gave her a year extra. This is her thing, you know, somehow it's getting a little mixed up, so, that could be as long as she thought she could. And that's all I have.
Ms. Phillips? Two weeks from today, laws, rules, and ordinances will be meeting at 6:30. I went through the cemetery today because I wanted to know what was going on. Place looks great. People have gone out and are actually picking up a lot of the little things that were around the different gravestones, and they're either placing them on the gravestones or attaching in some way because they know these things are going to be picked up. I also am talking with the young men who were out there doing their mowing. I told them I thought they were doing a good job. They have this machine now that will go around and pick up grass cloths, which was one of the problems the last time around, because you had the mowing and there was no place for them to go. The other thing on this is, the day that, we had the complaints in the paper about where our cemetery looked, and indeed, it didn't even work. Fleeo Blade, every one of the letters to the editor in there said the very same thing, identifying three of the biggest cemeteries up there and how the grass was all over the place, and everything needed mowing, and it looked bad. So, it's not just us. And the last thing is, Mrs. Hanson's birthday was yesterday.
Oh, yay! Yay! It's her birthday.
Not again. Yeah. She was 52.
I just want to make a quick little statement. Over the past few months, Team Akoc has been participating in some of the committee meetings, mostly Mr. Snyder's Finance Committee. And they have recommended some changes in the running of meetings and how we can expedite things and make our processes run more smoothly, and we're going to look at those issues. And I would like to ask Mr. Ackerman and Mr. Snyder and Ms. Phillips to serve on an ADHOC committee with me to look at those issues and see if we want to implement them into the Port Clinton City Council meetings. So, if you're willing to do that, I will look at my schedule, and you will set up a meeting soon.
Thanks, Madam President.
You're welcome. And now, members of the audience. Mr. Yankee?
Jerry Yankee, 117 Cedar Street. Is there a improvised youth program in the city of Port Clinton for summer help? I know at one time, WSOS was a sponsor of that program where they would have maybe five, six, seven, maybe 10 kids come, come in and be summer help. I just wonder if that program was still in existence?
Yes, it is. It is not nearly the size that it used to be.
Actually, the company that I own, TDH Enterprises, we are operating a summer youth program that is for individuals that are participants of the program. Like Linda said, historically, TDH has run a number of summer youth programs. When I first started 14 years ago, we had a summer program of around 120 youth. This program has dwindled down, and they're only serving 21 at this time. So, with the program... where in the process of working with finding jobs, I do have a part of this.
Cool. Good. And also, Madam President, you were talking about Team Akoc coming in and talking to the Finance Chairman. Is Rita on the table, as far as you know?
Not that I know of.
That has not been anything discussed in the Finance meetings.
Okay. For people that don't know what Rita is, what is a regional?
Regional, it could tax, or authority agency.
And their, their program is?
What they do against people.
I bring it up, and I (laugh).
Right. Speaking of that, Rita operates a lot of other municipalities, for lack of a better term, tax department, so they handle all the tax collection, those type of things for other municipalities.
Would that be suitable for Portland?
I mean, it's something, I don't think we've ever contemplated that, only because we already have our own tax department. The problem with Rita is that, whereas they do the late work for the municipalities, there's also a fee associated with that, so, I mean, without actually looking into the greater details, there's a possibility that the city could lose revenue because we would be paying a basically a third party order to operate any tax collection.
Mr. Snyder? Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Yankee, there is currently a state bill at the State House level that is attempting to regionalize income tax. It's taking Rita and putting it at the entire state level. The Finance Committee, for a couple of years now, has been following that and the progress. This council has actually taken a couple of actions, passed resolutions against such a thing, because if it would take money out of the city, they would do the same thing that we're doing in-house for a higher fee, and that's just something that we've been monitoring for some time now.
Yeah, but would they make sure a hundred percent of the money owed is collected?
I don't, we don't believe any more significantly than what's currently happening. Plus, if you have a question, there's really no answer yet as to who you would go to, where you would go. You may have to travel to Columbus to get an answer, or just here, you can walk down and talk to Joe.
Well, like the bed tax issue with these condo owners that rent their property out for two or three, four days, a week, whatever, you know, do they pay bed tax?
Those that register with the appropriate tax agency, whether it's the treasurer or the city or the county auditor.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, Roger Smith, two eighteen West Forest Street. I talked a little bit to the mayor about the letter, certified letter that I got about the grass cutting. One of the things I'd like to know is, how do you get on that list, and who puts you on that list?
Usually, it's the Safety Service Director. We'll see those addresses. You'll make note of it, and he'll bring it back, and the letter's typed up by the administrative assistant.
Okay, Tracy is-
Does that help answer you?
Yeah, Tracy is the one that puts you on that list, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you will meet-
Or, potentially, if you have a neighbor that complains or something like that, has a concern, obviously, Tracy will go out, Safety Service Director will go out, investigate, and if he finds it succeeding, six inches of growth, he will report.
Okay, one of the things I wanted to bring up, I have somebody that cuts my grass, he blows it, he trims it, and that's done just about every week. If Tracy or anybody would like to see those receipts, they can.
Mr. Smith, I think you're getting a little excited. Excesses do happen, maybe they printed the wrong address. Obviously, that's the case, as I look at your picture.
So you will-
So, we'll take, like I said, we'll get in touch with you, go look, maybe it's, maybe it's somebody next door or across the street, I don't know. I can't answer that right now, but obviously, we're-
You will get back with me.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else this evening? Mr. Nader?
With note of six oh eight East Berry Street. I'd like to ask the mayor, the SMA report that you referred to, is that just for the lighthouse area or for the entire park?
That one was strictly for geotech study for the placement of layoffs.
For the lighthouse?
So just strictly for layoffs.
Okay. Are the results from the bores and samplings done early this year, have they been completed?
Yes, they have.
Does the city have a copy of those?
I believe so, that's what I'm thinking, yeah, I believe, actually, it's in Genzo.
When, when were they, when was that report completed?
I don't have a phone, so I can't give you that.
Okay, roughly. You got any idea?
I really can't answer.
Okay, well, we'll find out.
I don't wanna give you the wrong answer.
Okay, that's cool. Mr. Wilber, invitation to the OCIC meeting for council. Now, if a majority of council members go to that meeting and ask questions and participate in the discussion, doesn't that constitute a council meeting?
If they go as members of the public, and if there's a number of them, and they're sitting listening, they get the information, that's just gathering the information.
All due respect, I don't think they can go as members of the public because it's a closed meeting, and members of the public can't go, and council received the invitation, so therefore, as council members received an invitation, they would have to go as council members.
I don't know.
We received an invitation, I believe, I'm a board member, I believe the mayor's a board member. Some of us are board members, so.
I might be a board member, whether that's a public meeting form or not, you have to ask, I don't know.
My understanding is it's not, so if it's not, and council members go, they have to go as council members, don't they?
That would be something to take a look at, I can't tell you right now.
Well, I will tell you that the invitation came to me personally.
Okay.
So maybe I read it near, I apologize, but it came to me personally.
How was the, how was the invitation addressed, there's said-
It says, "Linda Harbaugh."
It says, but it says that members of council are invited?
No. It doesn't. It does not say that.
Oh, okay, so you were invited, of course.
It came to me, I'm a board member.
Yes.
It came to me, I didn't, I, I just pulled out the envelope to, so I can answer your question, and so maybe I read it, maybe I should not have read it publicly, is what I'm saying, because it was addressed to me, and I am a board member.
Okay, well, I'd certainly not like to see council be involved in a meeting that is not held according to sunshine laws. Just to add on to what Mr. Snyder said, if someone wants to sing in the chorus for Fourth of July, and they can't get a hold of Mr. Fox, rehearsals are on Wednesday night at seven at Trinity Methodist Church, and I'm sure if you can't get a hold of him, and you'd like to walk in and join, they'd be more than happy, we'd be more than happy to have him. Just one more question, if I may?
Yes.
And that is, I'd like to ask Ms. Phillips, for those people who have loved ones, family, et cetera, in the cemeteries, does it really matter to them whether or not we were not the only ones who had problems maintaining the cemetery?
Do what?
Does it really matter? You mentioned that we were not the only ones that had problems maintaining the cemetery. Does it really matter to those people who have loved ones in that cemetery whether we're the only ones or not?
I'm not exactly following that, but my point is, we are not the only community that has had problems with cemeteries. Now, I don't get that upset when there's cut grass or not cut grass, because I know that my parents are there, not physically, they're not there anymore. I look at things as being on a higher plane. I plan on being cremated, so I don't care what they do around me. I just cannot get upset about some of the things that bother other people when there are major things that need to be taken care of in our lives.
So it doesn't bother you, then? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Finkie, go see if you had your hand up.
Yes, I did. I'm thinking two, two, two Adams Street. Out of curiosity, and I don't recall, Mr. Attell, do you recall, did the city put any money towards the mural down at Friendship Park, and if so, how much?
Unfortunately, that was done before my time as the auditor, so I had to take some time to research it, and at this point, I do not know.
Does anybody else, I can't remember. I remember a figure of twenty-five thousand dollars towards the mural, or what the artist got, or something like that, but.
I don't know right offhand, but I can definitely look into it for you.
I was just curious, because it was kinda money he'll spend. The next comment is to the citizens' council members. Given that you're sitting there today because of the vote of the people, and given that public parks are the citizens' parks, which of you city, citizens' council members do not support the right of the citizens to vote on their parks?
Could you, could you repeat the question? Which, I heard, which of you, but then I-
Which of you citizens' council members do not support the right of the citizens to vote on their parks?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Finkie, if I could ask a few questions, if you don't mind?
I thought it was a pretty simple question.
No, then I'll get to, I'll get to the answer to your question, I want some additional information. Are you the spokesman for Citizens Organized for Responsible Development?
One of them, yes.
Are, and I don't mean to sound flip here, was that a self-appointed position, or was it, you know, you elect the president, a vice president, and whatnot in your club? Was that a position you were elected to?
I anointed myself.
Okay, okay, but, you know-
Oh, come on, I wouldn't do that, for God's sake.
So you were, you were voted as spokesman for the organization?
I don't know if voted was, I-
Well, you stand up, you've stood up on several occasions, and you, although you introduce yourself with your, as you introduce yourself with the addressing of Dr. Peter Adams, you always, you always start your comments with Court with Life, or Court Encourages, or Court, so from-
When I speak on Court, I do.
Okay, so you speak on Court, and you've been quoted in a paper as representing Court, so, so it's fair to say you speak on behalf of Court, and all members of Court?
No. Go ahead.
So, yes or no, you speak on all?
Well, you didn't answer my yes or no, so.
Well, it's gonna, that answer's gonna, you got a give and take here, give and take here. So, do you speak for all members of Court, or just yourself?
I wouldn't presume that position to speak for all members of Court all the time.
Okay, okay.
If, if we discuss something that I bring up, then I'm doing it because we discussed it in a meeting, yes.
So, okay, so that question that you just asked was something that you, that you discussed in your committee meeting, and-
As a matter of fact, no, I'm just curious which ones do.
Okay, okay, well, I guess that leads to my question here. You know, it's, it's very, very apparent to me anyways, I know we disagree on this particular topic, but it's apparent to me that the citizens have spoken on several occasions about their thoughts on what should happen with Waterworks Park, and I understand, and I understand you disagree.
I mentioned Waterworks Park.
Yeah.
I mentioned all parks.
Sure, sure, okay.
This is not about Waterworks Park.
Oh, it's not? Okay, well, then, then I have a question for you then. If you're putting together a petition, correct, and that's presumably why you asked that question, is that correct? You're putting together a petition?
We have a petition going now, yes.
Okay, okay, and I would presume you really don't need the signatures of my signature or the other six members of council to get the votes that you need, or the signatures you need, I think somewhere under two hundred signatures, is that correct? Well, it's ten percent of the life gubernatorial, yeah, ten percent of the life gubernatorial election voters in the city of Portland. So whether, whether we sign that petition or not, you're gonna get your signatures, it probably will be on the ballot. Now, my question to you is, as self-appointed spokesman for Court, if, if I and the other members of council were to sign that petition encouraging that ballot initiative to go forth, and as I anticipate, the outcome of that will be, the petition will fail, much like Issue Ten, much like the elections that people said, I wanna, I wanna move forward, they've won elections, I don't wanna go forward, they've lost, and so forth, if, if, if we sign that, and it goes on the ballot, and November, I think, is when it's gonna take place, and, and if that referendum fails, and the citizens yet again say, guys, we wanna move forward, we wanna move forward, will you guys stop, or will you continue to do what you're doing?
We'll continue.
You'll continue? So it's not, it's not then about what the citizens want, it's what you want? Because you just said that you wanna hear what the citizens have to say, and yet again, I presume-
I don't believe I said anything.
You did? Somebody, you just said, continue, correct? I heard someone say, we will continue.
I don't think we discussed what we are going to do in the future.
Okay, can you speak for yourself, then? What would you do?
I would presume that we will continue being an organization going after the, our goals of a balanced and for varied development of the city as we see it.
Even, even again, if the citizens say, in this regard, would you agree that this, would you, I guess we need to agree at this, would you agree that if this referendum is put on the ballot, that it is a vote, yes or no, to move forward with development? Or don't you see it that way?
No, because that is what it says.
It's not? Okay, okay, I guess my line of question was moved, so.
Really, it was kind of a line, I thought.
Yeah. Asking questions, trying to get more information. Right.
The petition as it stated is that the citizens would have, if best, would have a right to vote before any transfer of any of the city parks. That's, that's what it says now. I realize that politicians have a way of reading into things, just like Issue Ten was read into, all it was was an issue whether or not the particular property was to be rezoned, that's all it was, and I think it's presumptuous to say just because it was voted through that that was a vote for development. Commercial rezoning on the property, there are festivals there that are commercially, commercial entities, and it's very possible that some people thought of that as a necessity to continue to do festivals there also. So I think it's presumptuous to assume that there was a vote for development when it was all a vote about rezoning, period. You brought it up, I wouldn't get into it, I just wanted to know. What do you have, who does not support the right of the citizens to vote on their parks and the citizens' property, that's all. I think it's a cut and dry question.
Why, why do you stop at parks? Why don't you, why don't you go with repaving streets, or buying police cars or fire trucks? Why, why stop at parks?
Because this is an issue about the citizens' parks, per se.
Aren't they the citizens' police cars? The citizens' fire trucks?
Oh, come on.
No, no, why, why stop at parks?
We want to.
Is this a way to avoid saying yes or no?
No, no, I just wanna know what-
I think the citizens, I think the citizens deserve the right to know whether they're committee members.
Well, to answer your question, yes, I'm supportive of the citizens' right to vote. They elected me to council on their behalf, and I believe that, that right has taken place.
Wow!
That was easy. He was, go vote for what the people want.
Yeah, see, how easy it was to answer that question.
Mr. Finkie has the floor.
Thank you, Madam President.
That means Mr. Philibon doesn't speak, that means that Mr. Yankee doesn't speak. Do you want the floor? Raise your hand.
Now, I would like to hear, I wanna hear from those that won't support it. I assume that most of you would support the right of the citizens to vote, that's. But now's the time, if you don't wanna support it, to say so. Well, I'm sure the citizens will be happy for your support. Thank you.
Barbara?
Barbara Wedzinger, five one nine East Ninth Street. It appears to me the citizens of Portland have elected this council, and by their election have given them our permission to make whatever decisions they feel best in light of buying the police cars.
in light of buying the police cars or parks.
Yeah, so what?
Mr. Yankee, I warned you once. I'm gonna warn you twice. I would have to throw you out at 20 after 8:00. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Philibon.
Yeah, Gary Philibon, 121 Wall Street. I've talked to a lot of people that are in my board and they don't even know who their councilman is for our war. And besides that, from what they said, they tell me that whatever they would tell their councilman, the councilman knows vote the way they want him to vote on things. They vote the way the councilman wants to vote. He votes the way he wants to vote, not by what the board, the people want to vote in the board. The way they want him to vote. He don't pay no attention to that.
Madam President, can I respond gently?
Yes, yes, you may.
Mr. Philibon, you and I have not had one conversation outside of these chambers after the election about what you think should be done. So if you could provide two examples.
I'm talking about all the people I've talked to.
If you could provide two examples, I'm happy to consider it. But if you don't have examples, it's just gonna be like the campaign where people know that you were not honest in your description of me, my interests, what I've looked to do. So if you could provide examples, I'm happy to have a conversation about it.
I never said you were honest. I never said anything about you.
What?
Well, I don't know where you come up with that information. I know I went door to door and I had eight or more signatures that you didn't. I never seen you on the street doing anything.
Mr. Philibon.
Thank you, Mr. Philibon.
Mr. Beal, on the election. Go on. Anyone else this evening?
Madam President, could I just request to quiet somebody out to Mr. Nover because I don't believe with a bad impression. Cemeteries are fine. We need them. Depending if that's the way you want to know. But my whole plan of life is I need to do things for those who are here and now. I need to make sure that we have food, clothing, and shelter for as many people as possible. Need to make sure that if we do have a certain number of people working for the city because we have a reduced load from earlier years, that those people are doing something for the bulk of the people who are here, like fixing potholes, that sort of thing, making sure that deadlines are met. That is my whole premise when it comes to the now life and the afterlife. I'm not gonna worry about the after. You'll know that has been my entire life, spending time, working with others. You can see a couple of people sitting right over there. I hope anyway.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, Mr. Phillips.
Maintaining the cemeteries for those people who have loved ones there is for the living. The dead don't visit there. The living visit there.
Make sure that those living visit the people while they are living. You can't do anything for the.
Okay, okay. Mr. Yankee.
Jerry Yankee, 117 Cedar Street. Is it too late to apply for summer employment with the city?
I believe that most of the seasonal staff have been hired. Typically, years past, we've hired between 10 and 12 individuals, typically 10. So far, the city has already hired 10 individuals. So if they're, yeah, if you know someone or if you're interested in submitting application, we're happy to take that on, but as far as our hiring process, I'm pretty. Thank you.
Mr. Philibon.
Gary Philibon, 121 Wall Street. I thought maybe the cemetery, whoever's in charge of the cemetery, maybe they oughta go over to Carver and look at Union Cemetery, how they got their cemetery set up. They don't have half the problem over there with their cemetery and what we got here. And one of the main things is where they pour a concrete slab down through there for the headstone to set on. Then they put white marble rock out so far away from the heads or from that concrete thing, all the way around the thing. So when they mow, they run across that marble like that and they blow the grass out toward the center. They don't blow grass all over their tombstones and stuff like that over there. Just take a walk over there sometime, any time of the year and look at it, at their cemetery. If we would do the same thing here, because I noticed here, there's grass right up to the headstone. And that's why a lot of problems they have. I have a problem up there where they weed it and I put these solar lights on the ends of each stone in the grass there because that's where the concrete thing ends. And when they weed, they come along, they knock it off, they knock your flowers off and everything else. And grass is all over the tombstones. But Carver don't have that problem.
I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn, Mr. Snyder.
Madam President, I would be satisfied.
Could I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Searcy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.